Trustee Canata.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Luck.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee May.
Here.
Trustee McAllister Brooks.
Here.
Trustee Wadia.
We have a quorum, thank you. And please note that there's items on your agenda that need to be adopted. I move for adoption of the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda's adopted, thank you. The minutes for the September 20th, 2019 Board Meeting were circulated in advance of the meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Thank you, Don, thank you for the second. You have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, minutes are approved. And now at this time, I'd like to recognize President White, who will introduce our guest for today.
It's a pleasure today to have Comptroller Justin Wilson here with the State of Tennessee. Mr. Justin Wilson was elected Tennessee's 34th Comptroller of the Treasury on January 15, 2009. He was reelected to a sixth term in January 2019. Comptroller Wilson has a history of public service. He served as the Commissioner of the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, and as a Deputy to the Governor for Policy under former Governor Don Sundquist. He was a member of the Financial Advisory Board of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. He served as Chairman of the Nashville Electric Board, the Davidson County Metropolitan Health Board, and the Community Health Agency of Nashville and Davidson County. He was Foreman of the Davidson County Grand Jury, and he has served in leadership positions for numerous Nashville business civic and charitable organizations. Comptroller Wilson was also a partner in the law firm of Waller, Lansden, Dorch, and Davis, where he served on its Executive Committee. He's a graduate of Stanford University, Vanderbilt University School of Law, and New York University. He was named Conservationist of the Year in 1997, and the Justin P. Wilson Cumberland Trail State Park is named in recognition of his conservation and environmental contributions to the State of Tennessee. He's married to Dr. Barbara Engelhardt, and is the father of four sons. And he is a friend to Austin Peay. He pays attention to all of the institutions in the state. I have had numerous occasions to visit with him as part of his work with THEC, the Tennessee Higher Education Commission, and also the State Building Commission. And of course, he is the person to whom all of our audit reports go, and so we pay attention. So please, Comptroller Wilson, come and make your remarks to our Board today. We welcome you.
No, it's usually better when I don't have it on, then you don't have to listen to this. For gosh sakes, this is informal, let's just talk about... And first of all, I'm Justin P. Wilson, I'm the State Comptroller, and I've got with me Sandy Thompson and Robin Probus, and they actually know what they're talking about. I'm gonna talk a little bit about your duties as trustees. And Robin's gonna talk about dealing with state audit, what we do. And Sandy's gonna talk about borrowing money. That's... and all those sort of things. I'll start off talking about... Who's got the slide? I'm gonna start talking about fiduciary duty. What you hear about working with state audit and the School Bond Authority, which as a practical matter Sandy runs. You are the governing body of the university. And... And you're the ones who really determine the policies of the university. You're the ones who do that. And you're the ones who are really responsible for monitoring and overseeing everything that happens on the campus. That's your responsibility. And that's all activities of the university. And you know, that includes monitoring and overseeing the administration. You don't just accept what they say. And I don't think this fiduciary, you know, is defined for purposes as someone with special responsibility with the property of the university. And that's not just the property itself, but also its management, its administration, its investments. Those are your responsibilities. And you basically have the duty of care, good faith. And that is... should be a surprise to none of you all. The underlying fiduciary duty, and this is not just for universities, but for anywhere else, is simply to act in the best interest of the organization. In this case, of course, it's the university. And what does that kind of mean? Well, it means that you need to be fully engaged. It means that you really need to get involved. It means you need to talk to all sorts of people, not just the administration, but you've got, you know, looking at your backgrounds, which I did on the way up here, you've got all sorts of ways of getting information. And you know, maybe talking to students, maybe from... that you see in reports. Could well be newspaper articles, it could well be just walking around and using your common sense, using your eyes. But it's really finding out your own ways, and there's no magical ways of doing this, what's going on, and making your judgments. Now, let me say that I know that you're all volunteers. You don't get any pay for this. Probably when the governor asked you to serve, you didn't have any idea of what you're getting into. Because what I'm asking and assist that you do is probably gonna take a whole lot more time and effort than you really thought about at the time. And that's the way it should be. And because there's a whole lot more than simply lending your name, or going to a few social events, or going rah 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 at the football games. Although I can understand why you do that. But it is actually being the governor, governing body of an institution that is... and to really determine the policies of the institution. Some of the things you have to do is you need to come to the meetings. And you need to be prepared for the meetings, which means you read what's furnished to you, you evaluate it, and you may have a bunch of questions, and that's all good and proper. And you may challenge it from other sources. Ask a bunch of questions. You can... you need to use your own judgment of who you ask the questions for, because sometimes asking different people, get different answers. You need to evaluate that, and that's all just fine. Of course, I don't believe this is an issue with you folks, but it's a loyalty issue to the institution. And to understand and uphold the mission. With this group, I don't think I need to tell you that you need to be confidential to those matters that are confidential. And to avoid conflicts of interest. If there are any conflicts of interest, disclose them quickly. And if you need to talk to the legal counsel, you've got folks here at Austin Peay can help you, what needs to be done, if in fact these things come up. And they may very well do that. One of the underlying responsibilities for the Board is to ensure legal compliance with laws, regulations. And you're the ones who need to do that. You can't rely on the institution, but you simply rely on their judgment to help you get where you want to, but you need to independently look at that. Now, one of the things when you're fiduciary is you consider what you need to do, and probably to determine whether or not you're doing your own job. And ask yourselves whether or not you really discuss the matters that become before you, and whether or not you really ask the questions you need to ask. And are you insisting that all the Board members get engaged? And all sorts of different ways of getting engaged, and there's no magical one way. But it's probably as healthy that you're engaged in different ways, because that probably makes a stronger institution. Every now and then, it may be appropriate to have experts. Often those experts are part of the administration, but not necessarily. And if you've got... if you have decisions that are outside of your competence, and this will happen all the time, are you getting the right advice you need to have? And do you believe it and trust it? You need to ask yourself. And then periodically, you need to assess your own performance to see if you're doing your own job. That is kind of a six. So when it gets right down to it, you're the ones ultimately responsible for the institution. Primarily, that is... One of the primary is oversight and the administration... and the monitoring of the administration. And is it doing its job? And that is not... it's a very broad topic. It's all aspects of the university and university life. You know, it's easy to talk about the student life itself. You know, what... it's not just the athletics in the classroom, but also the mental health of the students. The integration into society. The... are you preparing your students for the careers and life that they expect? And you need to deal with this. It includes the relationship of the university with other groups. One of those is the government. And here in Fort... you know, here we've got Fort Campbell in the military. It's a major thing that you need to be sure is lined up. Because ultimately, you are the university, you're the ones responsible for the university, and you've got your hands full. You know, we're happy to answer questions, but I suggest we go on to talk about audit responsibilities. We have Robin Probus here, who will talk about that. But this is, you know, we're happy questions now or later, however y'all want to do it.
I have one question.
Sure.
Just one thought on... I love your conversation about getting more engaged, asking lots of questions. One of the things that I feel like I've struggled with is the sunshine law.
Yes.
That I can't call any of my trustees and ask a question or have a conversation because I believe that is illegal to do that.
No, no, the sunshine law is that you can't go into decision-making process on matters that come to the Board, but you certainly can and should talk about the university, absolutely.
So I can do just fact-finding conversations?
Fact-finding is perfectly all right, talking about that is very much encouraged, exactly. Now, if you have a decision whether or not to approve a lease that comes before the Board today, you cannot discuss that without giving the proper notice, that specific vote on that lease. But talking about the university, talking about what you think of the athletic program, what you think about mental health of the university, whether the administration's doing its jobs, all those issues, we encourage you to do exactly that. And the more you do it, the better off it is, and ask questions and discuss things, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Go ahead, Robin.
Good morning, my name is Robin Probus. I'm an Assistant Director in the Division of State Audit within the Comptroller's Office. And I see several familiar faces here, because I was previously the Audit Manager over the audit. And I'm gonna be discussing our audits and our audit responsibility. You're most likely familiar with our annual financial and compliance audits. They include reviewing internal control over financial reporting, determining compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements, determining the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements, and recommending actions to correct any deficiencies. The single audit of the State of Tennessee is performed annually and covers the operation of the state as a whole, and it's conducted in accordance with federal requirements. Our single audit work at Austin Peay consists of federal compliance work on student financial assistance. The single audit is somewhat interrelated with the CAFR audit, which covers all of the state's funds and account groups, including the college and university funds. And like Austin Peay's financial statements are combined with the financial statements of the other LGIs and TBR institutions, and reported as the state, university, and community college system within the CAFR, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. At the universities, we also perform NCAA-agreed-upon procedures on the statement of revenues and expenses of the university's intercollegiate athletic programs, determining compliance with NCAA bylaws. The procedures performed are stipulated by the NCAA and agreed upon by university management, and no opinion is expressed on this engagement. Information systems auditors typically aid both financial and performance audits in assessing information system data reliability. And then performance audits, commonly referred to as sunset audits, are required by Tennessee Government Entity Review Law. And I'm gonna spend most of the presentation talking about the performance audits, because you are less familiar with those, and you're gonna have one coming up for the... probably the first time. The General Assembly enacted legislation over 40 years ago requiring the periodic review of entities created by the General Assembly. Each of these entities receives a sunset termination date in TCA. Austin Peay's Board of Trustees is currently scheduled to terminate June 30, 2021. So what is the Comptroller's role in the sunset process? Statute calls for the Comptroller to provide information to the Joint Government Operations Committee. We do this through either a performance audit or a question-and-answer process. In your case, we'll be conducting an audit. To help us conduct our audits, TCA grants the Comptroller access to any books and records of any governmental entity for the purpose of audit. All information we obtain from you and your staff is held in our confidential working papers that are not subject to open records requests. Our audit reports may report summary information or analysis of the information, but will not divulge any specifics that are deemed confidential. Like financial statement audits, sunset audits include a review of internal controls and processes related to the audit objectives. For a financial statement audit, our objective is to express an opinion on the financial statements. While sunset audits may touch on financial areas, these audits are much broader in scope. Sunset audits include a review of quality, efficiency, and success of an entity's programs in meeting their statutorily mandated mission. Therefore, while federal and state laws, rules and regulations, and entity policies are key to our assessment, we are not strictly limited to these criteria.
Well, let me just say that our sunset audit we'll have of Austin Peay, one of the things we're looking at is... it actually is an audit of the Board of Trustees, that's what the audit is. And one of the real questions we'll look to, are you meeting your duty of oversight? And that's the underlying question that we look at.
We can also use things such as industry standards, best practices, and contract requirements. For example, for universities, we might consider accreditation standards and peer-institution comparisons. Excuse me. Thank you, sorry about that.
The Comptroller's Office needs all the blessings we can get.
For the Board, we would also consider Association of Governing Board Guidance. Like the Comptroller said, your audit is gonna be of the Board of Trustees rather than the university itself. However, to ensure the Board has been engaged and has performed their duties of oversight and monitoring, we will be talking to employees of the university and obtaining supporting documentations from them. To plan our audit, we will interview management and frontline staff to obtain an understanding of processes and management controls. We will also interview Board members to obtain an understanding of Board operations and how the Board oversees the university's operations. We may also speak with other interested parties, such as legislators, interest groups, THEC, and SBC, to either identify issues or obtain information about operations. Once we identify the areas for detailed audit, we will send you an audit engagement letter detailing those areas. We will also hold an entrance conference where we can have a more detailed discussion regarding these areas. Our detailed audit work includes reviews of supporting documentation and sampling or testing full data populations. Throughout our detailed audit work, we will meet with management periodically to discuss preliminary results of our audit work. Overall, our conclusions are based on the facts and evidence of our work. Once we have completed our test work, we will produce a draft audit report to communicate our findings and observations and related recommendations. We'll transmit this draft to management and the Board for their review, and ask for management to submit written responses to findings, which will be incorporated into the final report. And then that report will be published on our website. You'll then be asked to attend a public hearing for the report. We recommend that you have Board representation at the hearing in addition to management. The hearings are typically held between June and December the year prior to the entity's termination date, and do allow for public comment. Sunset audits are used by a subcommittee of the Joint Government Operations Committee, which is made up of Senate and House members, and encompasses three subcommittees: Commerce, Education, and Judiciary. For universities, the Education Subcommittee will hear our findings and recommendations, as well as your responsive... your corrective actions taken or planned as a result. The Subcommittee will make a recommendation to either extend the Board from one to eight years, restructure the Board, or terminate the Board. This recommendation will become a legislative bill, eventually being voted on by the full Senate and House Representatives. Excuse me, I apologize. Now I would like to switch gears and talk a little bit about computer security. State statute requires the university to notify the Comptroller of the Treasury within five working days of the confirmed or suspected unauthorized acquisition of computer data and any confirmed or suspected breach of computer information systems. The university does not have to report individual occurrences of malware or spyware unless such occurrences led to a data or computer security breach. In addition, the notification will be confidential and not considered an open record. We have created a website, which is listed on the slide, that the university can use for this notification. And I add that Austin Peay has been diligent in reporting breaches to our office. You also have an obligation to report fraud, waste, and abuse of public money, property, or services to the Comptroller's Office. You can report information by calling our fraud hotline or by filing a report online. And again, that phone number and website are located on the slide. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Sandy.
Thank you, Robin. Good morning, my name is Sandy Thompson, and I am the Director of the Office of State and Local Finance. And I work for our beloved Comptroller. I also serve as the Assistant Secretary...
Got that right.
I also serve as the Assistant Secretary to the Tennessee State School Bond Authority. Our office is also essentially responsible for issuing and covering the debt service payments for the School Bond Authority debt, as well as even drilling down to the processing of the actual payments that go to the contractors when your projects are in process. So I was asked to talk with you today about the Tennessee State School Bond Authority and to share some information with you. Few basic facts about the School Bond Authority are: The Authority was created in 1965 pursuant to TCA 49-3-12, and is a corporate governmental agency in instrumentality of the State of Tennessee. The Higher Educational Facilities Program was created to provide the financing for a variety of revenue-generating projects, such as dormitories, athletic facilities, parking facilities, and major equipment purchases in a pooled loan program for the higher education institutions. In fact, this property in this building was financed with the Tennessee State School Bond Authority debt. I think they've paid it off too. Jackie?
Yes.
In addition to that, the School Bond Authority has a history of no defaults on its debt, intercepts of appropriations, or invasions of the Debt Service Reserve Fund. With regard to the issuance of debt or obligation, whether issued by the School Bond Authority or issued independently by an institution, any borrowings made by either institution, whether through the Authority or independently, are required to be approved by the Authority. Pursuant to TCA 49-3-1205, the Authority has the power to approve or disapprove actions taken by the Boards or any institution under the jurisdiction of either Board with respect to the borrowing of money for any purpose, whether by the issuance of bonds, or notes, or by any other method.
Now let me... this sounds... Any debt you try to have needs to be approved by the School Bond Authority. That's not... so, borrow money? You can't borrow money unless you get the approval of the State School Bond Authority. And not just through the Authority, but anytime if you want to borrow money, you gotta go through the School Bond Authority.
We also wanted to share with you the membership in the Tennessee State School Bond Authority. And the Authority is comprised of the following members: The Governor, that serves as the Chair, Comptroller of the Treasury, he is the Secretary to the School Bond Authority, the Secretary of State, the State Treasurer, Commissioner of Finance and Administration, the President of the University of Tennessee, and the Chancellor of the Tennessee Board of Regents. So let's take a look at the School Bond Authority's debt outstanding as of October 31, 2019. So the total long-term debt outstanding for the School Bond Authority was $1,705,415,000, with an additional $40 million outstanding in our short-term revolving credit facility. And that credit facility is with US Bank and Wells Fargo, they share in that. There are also 15 projects totaling $181 million that have been disclosed in previous budgets, but have yet to go through the project approval process. I would like to add that the long-term debt of $1.7 billion also includes the bonds for the most recent School Bond Authority bond sale that was held in August of this year. And at that time, we issued $147 million in tax-exempt bonds and $60 million in taxable bonds to finance a variety of projects. So the Higher Educational Facilities have different types of projects that have been financed with bonds. Some have been financed with the state's general obligation bonds, and some have been financed through the Tennessee State School Bond Authority. We wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few of the differences between these two programs. First, the structure of each of the programs is different. The Tennessee State School Bond Authority program is structured as a pooled loan program. Loans are made to the institutions pursuant to a financing agreement to fund the costs of revenue-producing projects, such as parking garages and dormitories. The loans are initially short-term funded with the proceeds of a revolving credit facility to fund the project costs for construction. And once the project is completed, the revolving credit facility is repaid with the proceeds from the sale of the School Bond Authority long-term debt. And there are multiple borrowers, such as yourselves, for this pool of projects. In contrast to the School Bond Authority, there's general obligation debt that's issued to finance the state's higher education classroom-type projects. And there are multiple projects that are financed in each bond issuance, but the state is the sole obligor on this debt.
Well, let me just... is the School Bond Authority, the facilities you have here, you all pay for? The GO debt that comes out of the state general budget?
So another difference between these two programs are the terms. So the terms for the new money debt that's issued by the Tennessee State School Bond Authority is... It's always a fixed rate. We always issue fixed-rate debt, don't we, Comptroller?
As long as I'm Comptroller.
Final maturity of the bond principal is normally 20 to 30 years, depending on the type and useful life of the project. And the structure of the debt is level debt service. A debt service schedule where total annual principal plus interest is approximately the same each year and every year throughout the life of the bonds, with a maturity schedule with increasing principal amounts... the life of the bonds, with a maturity schedule with increasing principal amounts each year. It's very similar to your home mortgage. A level debt service structure allows us to match annual debt service required revenue projections of each project. The terms for the new money GO debt issued by the state is always issued at a fixed rate with a final maturity of 20 years, and that debt is issued with level principal. In other words, if you issue $200 million in debt, you're going to pay $10 million a year in principal, so that would be level principal. Another difference between these two programs is the security pledge. The debt of the Tennessee State School Bond Authority is secured by the covenant of the boards to establish and pledge of the fees and charges at the institutions. This is called a gross revenue pledge. So the fees and charges are such as parking fees and dormitory payments. In addition, security for the bonds has also been established through the statutory intercept of legislative appropriations for operations and maintenance, if necessary. The security pledge for GO debt, all new general obligation debt issued by the state is secured by the full faith and credit of the state, and there is a priority lien on the state's So to summarize, here are the key points on how the School Bond Authority debt is structured. Bonds are secured by the pledge of revenue from fees and charges and the intercept of state appropriations within each institution. Legislation provides that the full amount of state appropriations within each institution are accessible for intercept. The debt is structured with level debt service. The amortization of the debt does not exceed the useful life of the asset. Long-term debt is usually issued with 20- to 30-year terms. And the debt service payments are due from the borrowers on October 25th and April 25th. And that lines up with the debt service due dates, which is November 1st and May 1st. So let's take a look at the workflow of the School Bond Authority project approval process. First step is, the leadership at each university or college identifies a project that needs to be funded, and they prioritize that project and submit that to each respective institution, whether it be UT or TBR. Each institution evaluates each request and develops a financing request that's to be reviewed, submitted and reviewed by the staff at the Tennessee State School Bond Authority and the State Building Commission. Next, the Office of State and Local Finance serves staff members to the School Bond Authority, and our office is responsible for vetting these projects through our bond council. And our bond council looks at each project and determines whether that particular project needs to be financed with taxable debt or tax-exempt debt. They look at the private use in a project, and if there's too much private use, what they'll do is advise us to issue it with taxable debt. Then we conduct a feasibility test to determine that each standalone project will generate sufficient revenues to meet the annual estimated debt service requirement on that project. The State Building Commission considers the request for funding, which includes the financial evaluation and the recommendation from the staff of the Tennessee State School Bond Authority, and if appropriate approves the project. Then the request for the School Bond Authority funding of the project is formally submitted to the board for approval, and this is the final approval that's needed for the project to be initiated. And once all final approvals are received, the projects are initially funded with short-term debt proceeds and that are drawn down from the revolving credit facility until they're subsequently refinanced and taken to long-term debt. So as we mentioned, the funding that's available following Tennessee State School Bond Authority approval is the short-term debt that's drawn to fund the projects as they progress through construction, and the long-term debt that's issued once the projects are at least 80% complete. Certain projects with a useful life of less than or equal to 10 years could be amortized within the revolving credit facility. I will mention that several of these projects were included in this most recent bond sale because, based on an analysis, the pricing of this as a fixed-rate debt in the bond sale with maturities on the short end of the maturity schedule was more cost-efficient than actually amortizing the debt in the variable-rate credit facility. I do want to mention that comptroller did have a hand in the creditworthiness and credit strength of the Tennessee State School Bond Authority. And this is mostly because Tennessee State School Bond Authority credit is tied to the GO credit, and comptroller's worked very, very hard to maintain, obtain, and sustain a very, very strong credit rating for our general obligation debt. His diligence in guiding the state's finances earned Tennessee the AAA rating back in May of 2017. So the main reasons why School Bond Authority has achieved this highest rating, along with that being tied to the GO triple-triple rating, AAA rating, is the Tennessee State School Bond program has exceptional debt service coverage, the bonds are secured by a gross-revenue pledge, all of the institution's state appropriations are accessible for intercept in the event that there is a failure to pay, and the debt structure as level debt service assists the institutions as they set their budgets each year. So to summarize, the main benefits to the Tennessee State School Bond Authority financing are, with the highest credit strength that it has, it lends to a lower interest cost, there's the strong gross revenue coverage provided for removal of the Debt Service Reserve Fund without a rating downgrade, access to short-term facility advances project completion, and it's a most cost-efficient method of financing capital projects because of the economies of scale, the shared costs of issuance with all of the borrowers across the TBR schools, and the sharing of ongoing administrative costs. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Well, y'all got a great institution here, and your responsibility is to be sure that it follows its mission and continues to be a great institution. That means that you all need to act affirmatively and positively for that, and it really means be involved, ask a bunch of questions, because your responsibility is oversight and monitoring. Now, we've given you a lot of information. We'll have the slides available for all of you. We're happy to answer any questions, either now or whenever you may have them. For gosh sakes, would much rather, it's much better to come to the comptroller than have the comptroller come to you.[1033.13][1033.13](laughing). So if you've got questions, if you're confused about this, we will work with you to get it resolved. Now, I want to thank each and every one of you, and happy to take any questions.
I would ask one quick one, maybe it won't be quick, but yesterday we had an extended meeting of the Board of Trustees, and we had the athletic director from Austin P. come in and lay out a number of things, a very valuable briefing. One of the issues that came up there was this one, and you're aware of it, it's in the press all the time, but that, how the NCAA is going to manage this issue of, will you pay players to come to the university play? I wonder if you had any thoughts about that that you could share with us?
Well, I have all sorts of thoughts about it, but I'm not particularly interested in sharing them right now.[1100.13][1100.13](laughing). And the reason for that is that that's really not the role of the comptroller.
Right.
It's, you know, I want to stay away from the stuff that I don't have any business talking about, and I think that's probably one of them.
Yeah, I assume that, but we had a very healthy discussion about it yesterday.
That's what we encourage, that's exactly what you should be doing.
And we didn't throw anything during the meeting, which was very, but it was good to get read in on that, and where our country goes with that will be interesting.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you all, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. And comptroller Wilson and Robyn and Sandy, we have small tokens of appreciation from Austin P. before you take back. Thank you for coming up on a rainy Friday to see us today, and it was very invaluable information.
Well, thank you all.[1162.13][1162.13](applause).
We're fortunate this morning to have, it's kind of off the grid a little bit, but we're fortunate and kind of honored to have Coach Mark Hudspeth with us this morning. Coach, are you in here somewhere? There he is. As all of us know, and we're very excited, you want to come up, Coach? While he's coming up, you don't want to hear me talk, I'd rather hear Coach say a few words to us this morning, but we thought it'd be cool to ask Coach to come in and say hi to us and also allow us the opportunity to recognize him for the terrific year that we've had so far this year.
That's right.
We got another one tomorrow that a lot of us will be at cheering loudly, and 42 years since our last real discussion about a potential conference championship, and here we are on the cusp of hopefully being able to do that. So just wanted to say congratulations for the season you've had so far, and we're excited about tomorrow and what may come after that, and allow you to just say hi to us for a few minutes. Thanks for coming in.
Absolutely. Well, President White, Board of Trustees, and friends of the university and supporters, I want you to know, first of all, before I talk about the season, how proud I am to be leading your football program, and I really appreciate the opportunity that President White and Gerald Harrison extended to me back last December. And, you know, we had a vision together that we wanted to bring a great experience to our student athletes and to our university. We want to compete for championships every single year, and not only on the field, but we want to develop champions off the field. We want to develop some great fathers, some great husbands, and some great community leaders one day within our football program that hopefully will want to give back to our university one day because they had such an outstanding experience. Now tomorrow, we got a big one, don't know if y'all have heard, got a big one tomorrow at Fort Terra. And this senior class, I'm really, really proud of these guys. This senior class now was brought here, obviously by Coach Healy a few years ago, and really believed in this university. And I think Coach Healy started this by, you know, selling those guys, hey, let's come in and let's develop and build a program. And they came here just trusting that Austin P. would be a great program one day. And then obviously through the hard work of Coach Healy and his staff previously, and then obviously with our team this year, we're one game away from achieving some outstanding, hopefully something that's going to even lead us into bigger things in the future. And I'm hoping that this is going to lead us to some great national exposure for our program, for our university, for Clarksville, but we've got a big one tomorrow before we can even, we don't try to talk ahead, we don't want to get ahead too early. And so obviously tomorrow will be a big one, Eastern Illinois. This senior class, just to reiterate, couple things, they've had a really good season to date. They've beat their arch rival 42-7. We let that dang horse, though, Mike, drag around the track one time at the second half. We was hoping to keep him in the stable the whole time. But nevertheless, they've one game away from winning the OVC, and they're ranked 19th in the nation right now. And so tomorrow with the victory, we should move up probably into around 12th in the country if we can find a way to beat Eastern Illinois tomorrow. It should be a great crowd, great energy tomorrow in Fort Terra. Our team's excited, they've had a great week of preparation, and we've got a lot of juice right now in our team, a lot of excitement. You probably hear me talking about juice, talking about energy. Well, I want to show you, there's two types of juice before I leave, okay? Then I'm going to let y'all get started, because we're fixing to have our staff meeting similar to this. Don't quite have this fancy stuff right here, this is pretty nice. Can we borrow you this sometime? No. Nevertheless, I want everybody to do me one favor, start putting your hands together, let's get a little clap going right. Clap it up, clap it up.[1438.13][1438.13](applause). All right. Now, that was good energy, okay? That was good energy. Let me show you the difference, though, when you have one heartbeat, though. One heartbeat means everybody at the university and everybody in Clarksville, and all the alumni, the students, the band, the cheerleaders, the football team, the administration, all the leaders, everybody, alumni, everybody has one heartbeat, okay? So now, let's start clapping together.[1465.53][1465.53](applause). Now, don't that sound so much better? That right there is the rhythm of the heart. And right now, our football team, our university, everybody involved, we've got a chance to do something special. And I appreciate your support, I appreciate the board's support, and our team really appreciates it. And tomorrow, we're going to play awfully hard, hopefully to make you guys proud and to bring a championship right here to Austin P. Thanks a lot, go Gavs.[1498.13][1498.13](applause).
Thanks, Coach, get back to work.
You got it.[1506.74][1506.74](laughing).
Appreciate it. We'll see you tomorrow, congratulations. At this time, I'd like to recognize again President White, who introduced the individuals who provide us with the campus spotlight.
So as you know, every session, we introduce you to an initiative, a program, could be academic, could be athletic, it could be student affairs, business affairs, or our T department, but we try to introduce you to something that we think will give you a better flavor of who Austin P. is and some of the innovations here. And I'm really proud of who we have joining us today because this is a great example, this spotlight will show you the power, I'm going to use that heartbeat analogy at some point, but the power of collaboration, the power of partnership. And we talk a lot about our role as a university in Clarksville-McMontgomery County as a steward of place, and this is an example of that. So this morning's spotlight is about the Early Learning Teacher Residency Program. It's a partnership between the Erickson College of Education and the Clarksville-McMontgomery County School System. The Dean of the Erickson College of Education, Dr. Prentice Chandler, and the Chief Academic Officer of CMCSS, Dr. Sean M. Pertriss, will be presenting this partnership. Dean Chandler has served as the Dean of the Erickson College of Education for two years before coming to Austin P. He was the Associate Director of Teacher Education and Leadership and an Associate Professor of Social Studies Education at the University of Cincinnati. Prior to his time in Cincinnati, he was the Department Chair of Secondary Education and an Associate Professor of History and Social Science Education at Athens State University in Alabama. He received a bachelor's and master's from the University of North Alabama and his EDS and PhD from the University of Alabama. Dr. Sean Pertriss came to the school system 12 years ago as a Director of Middle Schools. Prior to his time at the Clarksville-McMontgomery County School System, he worked as a Special Education and Middle School History Teacher, Assistant Principal, and Principal. He has 30 years of experience in education. He received his bachelor's degree from Fresno State University in California and his master's and doctorate from Trevecca Nazarene University. It's my pleasure to invite Dr. Chandler and Dr. Pertriss to the table to give their presentation on this important partnership. Thank you, gentlemen.[1665.35][1665.35](applause).
I kind of want to dress out for the team tomorrow.[1682.26][1682.26](laughing). Good morning to everybody, my name is Prentice Chandler, I'm the current Dean of the Erickson College of Education. I would like to thank President White and the Austin P. State University Board of Trustees for this morning's invitation to share some of the exciting work that we're doing over in the college. During my almost 20 years in education, this is without a doubt the most interesting and powerful work that I've been a part of. Before I get started, I would like to recognize my leadership team. One of the first things that I did when I started as dean back in 2017 was to create a team of talented staff and faculty to help me do the good work that we're all here to do. Deans get credit for stuff all the time that they didn't do all the hard work for. This is, today is one of those days. I feel like the quarterback of a football team that threw five interceptions, but the defense pulled him out at the end, and then I get interviewed afterwards. So when I call your name, just stand and be recognized, please. We have Jana Hatcher, who is our Coordinator of Certification and Licensure, Teresa DeZellum, our Academic Associate, aka Chief of Staff, Benita Brewster, our Department Chair for Teaching and Learning, Tom Butterrey, our Department Chair for Ed Specialties, Education Specialties, Dr. Lisa Baron, Director of Teacher Education and Partnerships, and Lori Allen, our Liaison for External Affairs. Thank you so much.[1768.24][1768.24](applause). I would also like to say thank you to President White and Provost Gandy. When we first started these conversations a couple of years ago, I thought the idea was great, I thought it was something that we should do, but I wasn't sure that the President and the Provost would think, see it the way that I saw it. This would not have occurred without a green light from both of them. I would also like to thank the Director, Millard House, the Director of CMCSS. I would also like to thank the Director, Millard House, the Director of CMCSS. Clarksville is very fortunate to have him leading their school district. I have never worked with a group of leaders that even compares to the leaders that CMCSS has running things. So I want to start with our missions. When we look at our mission statement and CMCSS's mission statement, you'll see that they're very similar. We're actually calling for the same sorts of things. We're gonna talk about residency programs today. Residency is a term that we have borrowed from the medical field. In the context of education, residency programs is essentially having our candidates, having our teachers, spend more time in schools before they actually become a full-fledged licensed teacher. We have been working on this, like I said, for about two years. And really at the heart of this is something that President White has already talked about is partnerships. And again, this partnership that we're going to describe today is unlike anything I have been a part of. Our work began with the proposition that both of our organizations, Austin P State University's College of Education and the school district cared about and wanted the same things, which sometimes is a difficult hurdle to get over when organizations are trying to work together. And again, this is why I have this slide of our missions. We're really, we're really working towards the same things. We just needed to find a way to work together and make it happen. I say this all the time, people roll their eyes, but I'm always gonna say it because I think it's awesome. We were on the same team and didn't know it. We just needed people around the table that wanted to work together and that's what we have. So in order for this partnership to develop, we had to shift the way we thought in the College of Education about partnership. It should be noted that colleges of education across the country have partnerships. You're not gonna find a dean of education or a department chair that doesn't think they have a partnership. So that apart, that part of this is not original. Partnerships are built into what colleges of education do. It's a sort of a symbiotic relationship. They need us, we need them. But at the beginning of these conversations for us in the college, I posed a question to our leadership team, which was if we could start from scratch and do this thing over, if we could start, if we could sort of clean, wipe the chalkboard down and start over, what would this look like? And we came to the conclusion that if we started over, it wouldn't look like how we were currently doing it. And so if we're responsible for the structures that are in place, let's go ahead and create some structures that actually work. And so that was sort of our starting point, really looking at how do we create a new type of partnership. And again, the words that I use to describe our partnerships is sort of, there's a dualism or a dichotomy that comes out. We want to be proactive instead of reactive. We want to be deep as opposed to superficial. And instead of just running programs, which is what every college of education in the country does, running programs, graduating people, which is awesome, we should graduate people, that's not the issue. We want to solve some problems, solve persistent problems in education. And so those are the shifts. Proactive, reactive, deep, superficial. And instead of just running programs, let's solve persistent issues in education. And that's what the slide that you see there is about. First of all, the preparation of teachers is no longer the sole province of colleges of education. Once upon a time, that was the case. That day has passed us by. The stakes are too high, the work is too important. Our stakeholders demand more of us than they did 10, 15, 20 years ago. We have talented people in the college doing work, people in the school district have talented people doing the work. And again, it goes to that idea of just getting around the table and figuring out how we could do this work together. It also helps that we have a world-class district right in our backyard. And when I say that, I truly mean that when you have a partner like CMCSS, it makes innovative work a possibility. I have worked places where it was not a possibility and it's a possibility here. The health of a college of education is directly tied to the relationship they have with the school district. And again, as we're gonna talk about today, our relationship is rock solid. Big P, Little P, this is something I talk about all the time. I've worked in teacher education in three other states. And as I mentioned before, everybody says and nods when you talk about partnership. The partnerships that most colleges of education talk about are largely transactional. You do something for me when I need it, I do something for you when you need it. That's very, it's a reactive mode. When I describe Little P partnerships, I think of things like calling the school district to ask them if we can put students in their schools, which they always say yes. And then the district will call us up on the phone. They know us, everybody knows Jana, so they call Jana and say, do y'all have a math teacher? Now, you need Little P partnership to operate, but that's like baseline. What we're doing with Big P partnership is something I've already touched on, is getting together and solving those things that we complain about decade after decade. That's the difference. And for us, it's looking at teacher shortage, which isn't a new problem. Getting more diverse teachers in our classrooms, not a new problem. And then ensuring that the school districts are getting the types of teachers that they need in terms of what they're licensed in, also not a new problem. In fact, these problems are not new and they will get worse if we don't do something about it. These last three points on this slide are separate but connected. This shift in the College of Ed was sort of pushed forward by the idea that we are, not only do we want the same things, but we have some of the same sorts of constraints. When organizations work together, they fail or forget to talk about the things that are constraining. And when you leave that out of the conversation, it looks like you are being stubborn or don't want to work. So one of the first things that we did was talked about our overlapping interests and things that we could and couldn't do. Just get it out on the table right up front. This, of course, leads to an honest conversation. And I'll say this too. We can't solve all these problems at one time. That's not what this talk is about. But we also can't identify, we can't identify historic structural problems on Monday and then like around Wednesday, we've got it fixed. This is gonna take us a little while. But I will say that we have gotten to work on the ones that we can do something about. This brings me to a metaphor that I use, it's pulling in the same direction. I think of like a crew team or a row team where all of the people are rowing in the same direction. And when it comes to this project that we're gonna talk about, again, I haven't ever seen this in my almost 20 years in education where the school district works in tandem with the College of Education, which works with a teacher association, which works with the state, as there's the one that usually gets some negative attention, the state's on board with this, and the school board. So we have five groups that historically are siloed, that historically don't get along, working together to solve these problems. Last year, when this work was getting started, the College of Education and CMCSS were highlighted by publication from a group called Education First. This is a nonprofit focused on improving educational outcomes. The document that you see on the screen was developed by that group. It was a toolkit that of strategies and ways in which colleges of education could work with their school partners. We have given a version of this talk about 17 times since this time last year. And I always include this slide. And I always include this slide for two reasons. Number one, I'm proud that we're getting attention nationally. But I also like to remind people, and this sort of drives it home, that this work that we're doing is going to go national. This is just the beginning. And Austin P State University and Clarksville Montgomery County are at the edge, the leading edge of this. This is a story that's too good to not become a model for the state and the nation because it gets at those problems that, again, we've spent decades sort of talking about. One of the first meetings that we had back in 2017 was to determine our common goals. And these goals, again, form the foundation of our residency project. And those are, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Peretris, but as a recap, recruiting and retaining diverse teachers. This is a social justice issue. When we have 75% of our teachers, 80% of our teachers as white people and an overwhelming, increasing amount of our teachers are not, there's something to be said in terms of social justice there. Teachers, students should be taught by people who look like them. And the research tells us that that increases educational outcomes across the board. So not only is it a good idea, it also works better. Getting people into high needs, hard to staff areas, licensure areas like special education and mathematics. And of course, the big one that is going to get worse if we don't do something about it is to solve the teacher shortage. And again, at this point, I'll turn it over to Dr. Peretris, the Chief Academic Officer of CMCSS.
Thank you, Dr. Chandler. So I want to reiterate what Dr. Chandler said. Dr. Chandler and Dr. Baron and their team came in two years ago to our offices in Clarksville Montgomery County and just asked for, let's have a restart in our partnership. And that's not a judgment about previous partnerships, it's just new leaders coming on board and getting a chance to come together and understand that we are on the same team and we have the same goals and let's work together to get something done. So the progress that's been made in two years has been a transparent process. One of the first things that Dr. Chandler and Dr. Baron did is bring a team to our offices and show us their report card. So the state issues them a report card for their teacher ed program. And what was really defining in that process is how well we know Austin P prepares teachers to enter our district and other districts, exemplary scores in that area. But the one area where they had a challenge was the one area we'd been spending three years on, which is increasing the diversity of the teaching body. So we'd spent three years of our strategic work, like Dr. Chandler said, focusing on the concept that when we have 16% of our teachers that are ethnically diverse and we have 50% of our students that are ethnically diverse, that's not equity. Students deserve to be taught by teachers that look like them. So we had increased our recruiting efforts to historically African-American universities, historically Hispanic-serving universities. But some things are happening in recruiting right now. One, the State Department, when we looked at recruiting out of state, made it a little bit more difficult for out-of-state teachers to come into the state of Tennessee. And so just to give you a little bit of idea of what we need when we annually recruit teachers, you know, for 30 years, Clarksville Montgomery County Schools has averaged 600 student growth, which is a great problem to have. Three of the last four years, we've averaged 1,200 students growth. So between that and us being a military community, which we are very proud of, we have military spouses that serve as teachers, sometimes multiple times, they're excellent teachers, but that gives us about a 40% mobility rate. So when you put those two things together, the number of students that are coming to Clarksville, which is a wonderful thing, the mobility rate we have, we hire some 400 teachers a year. Austin P has produced between 160 to 200 teachers a year. So we were no stranger to recruiting, but the rules kind of changed by the State Department. But the other thing that's happened is that the baby boomers are starting to retire over the next nine to 10 years, the largest generation we've had of teachers. And so when they retire, there has to be somebody to take their place. And that's why this U.S. Census Bureau data is so important. Because as we were working on increasing diversity, this is what was happening to us. So in 1975, you see that 22% of freshmen declared education as a major. That was the number one major in 1975. Some 40 years later, it's down to 10%. Two years later, it's down to 4.6%. So you've got baby boomers retiring, you've got fewer people entering the profession. And so a traditional approach will not solve a problem that requires a different approach. And so we did a lot of research. And what we found is in Fresno State, Fresno Unified, Fresno Pacific, in that area of the country, they had received, Fresno Unified had received a $23 million innovation grant around diversity. But at the same time, they were facing the teacher shortage too. So they developed like 12 different teacher pipelines, which essentially focus on kind of two groups of candidates. One are classified candidates, so we have bus drivers, educational assistants, secretaries, custodians that work for us that have worked with students for many years. And they work very successfully with students. They may have started a college degree, they may have not have started a college degree. Some of them may even have degrees, but it's not in education. So how can we take advantage of that classified workforce that we know are successful with some of our most challenging students? They also mirror the diversity of our community. They are our community. And then how can we take advantage of the opportunity of our high school seniors that are graduating, looking for a career? How can we expose them to the opportunities that education provides in a city like Clarksville where a teacher salary can lead to affordable housing and a high quality of life? So we merged these concepts together using the Fresno State model around their pipelines and then focused on classified that were degreed, classified that were non-degreed in our high school seniors to create the Early Learning Teacher Residency. So we took 20 educational assistants with 20 traditional college freshmen and we put them in five of our lowest socioeconomic schools. The reason we did that was because what we know in education is our lowest socioeconomic schools usually have our teachers that are less prepared to teach them. When teachers gain experience, many times they move out of those schools to higher socioeconomic schools. The stress that it takes within those schools to continue to try to get the same expectation for students, which is certainly possible, but requires a lot of energy and stress, many people leave the field. So what ends up happening, if Clarksville is a test case, is our lowest performing kids in our lowest performing schools have teachers with less experience. So we wanted to reverse that trend. So we put the 20 educational assistants, the 20 traditional age freshmen in these five lowest socioeconomic schools. We partnered with Austin P to create a three-year accelerated program. So it's a three-year program that at the end of three years, those 40 individuals will have a degree by Austin P and will be eligible for certification K5 and in special ed. They're eight-week courses, including the summer. They never take more than two courses at a time. Austin P did a great job at developing the sequence. Like I said, it's a dual certification and we partnered on a 50-50 split with Austin P around tuition, funding, and fees. And so it's a split so that the actual candidates do not pay for this opportunity. They are paid as educational assistants. So that required Austin P to start offering some classes in the early evening where they had not before. So I do want you to know the amount of flexibility that went into this from Austin P's standpoint. So we also provide them academic support. They get a master teacher in the classroom, some of the best that we have. We pay them a pretty good supplement. In fact, of the 15, 12 of them came from higher socioeconomic schools for this opportunity to mentor these residencies, so already reversing that trend. So they're gonna be mentored by the best teachers we have in the areas of K2 education over the next three years. And in the fourth year, we guarantee them a job. They owe us three years of service. But here's the deal. Traditional teaching experience, student teaching, two six-week placements. After about three years, 50% leave the field or leave the area. In our residency program, 93% stay in the field. So we wanted to celebrate this accomplishment with Austin P at Austin P by having a signing day. Why don't we treat them like we treat the people that we exemplify the most in our colleges and universities? Why don't we treat them like an athlete? These are stars to us. So this video will show you kind of the mood of that day, the focus of that day where we have 20 18-year-olds with their parents saying, I don't have to pay for education. Very excited about that. And then you've got 20 classified that are there with their kids and the pride and the example and the change of a life that could happen based on that experience. How does this help diversity? Residency programs represent the community. So we went from 16% to we're about 35, 36% with this current cohort group. It's not the 50% we're after, but we're closer. When you invest in the community, you get community representation.
Two years ago, we started looking into diversity, how to increase our diversity. We have 20% of our teacher population is diverse and 50% of our student population is diverse.
What excites me the most about the program is that we are attacking three problems in teacher education. in teacher education. There's the diversity issue, uh, there's pipeline workforce issues, um, and then there's uh high-needs areas, and this, this program uh attacks all three of those problems. Those are problems that are, uh, problems across the nation, and to work with CMCSS on this is, is great.
The, the excellence of this district is determined by the teachers in the classroom, and students benefit from being taught and have examples of teachers that look like them, and they deserve a qualified teacher in a classroom.
Today is a big day for us, and we get to actually sign the contract between the partnership between Austin P and CMCSS, and I'm so excited to be a part of this. I wanted to go back to school and be a teacher. I've been in the school system for eleven years as, first off, starting as a substitute teacher, then as an educational assistant, but I had to put work first, because at one point, I was a single parent and I had to take care of my kids. So working sixty hours a week and trying to go to school just wasn't a good combination. And so I feel that what this program is, opened up so many doors for me, also gives me an opportunity to continue to help people, which I enjoy to do.
We hired nineteen master teachers, level-five teachers in our district, to come into five low socioeconomic schools. So our residents are going to have three years of co-planning, co-teaching, doing intervention with the best teachers we have. So when they come out, they're going to be as prepared as anybody could ever be.
The three-year cohort model was something that the district requested, because we want to get these people in the classroom as quickly as possible. Uh, but it's not less coursework, it's just accelerated, uh, and the students will be going through the summer. The, the part about this program that's actually a little better, I believe, than traditional teacher education, is that they're doing their teaching residency for three years as opposed to having one semester of student teaching. To do teacher education in a uh district like CMCSS, it makes everything better, it makes everything more streamlined, that there's better, there's more quality. Um, doing teacher education in other states is, is frankly, so it's harder, it's a lot harder.
When we began this venture with Austin P, it's been an eight-month negotiation with Austin P to secure this partnership, and I couldn't be more proud of Austin P coming to the table, working as co-partners to focus on the early learning teacher residency.
Okay, so we'll talk briefly about some supports. Um, the two that I want to mention that are real important, I talked about the opportunity culture, which are those, those dynamic teachers that are, are mentoring the residents. Avid has forty years of experience of working with first-generation ethnically diverse uh students in K-12 education and higher ed to give them opportunities to be successful in college. They focus on focused note-taking, critical reading, structured writing, inquiry-based tutoring. We partner with them to help provide our after-school support. I did have a meeting two years ago with the CMCEA president, the association president. She wanted to know what we were going to do about the teacher shortage, so we laid out some of the plans that we're talking about today, and I asked her, "Well, what are you going to do about the teacher shortage? Why don't we work on this together? This is the biggest challenge facing education today." And so they took that challenge, and they are the avid tutors, and they have provided financial assistance for the textbooks. So we have the association on board in this, this process too.
I think we're up against the time. So the bullet points in the APSU column, collectively, I can just say that this project is successful because of a, the entire university. Now, there's, there's offices across campus, uh, changing the way they do things, being flexible to support this effort, uh, and there's, there's several of them there.
And then um, this work is attempted to be replicated by the state. Um, we did get a class-sized waiver, which allows us to use existing money to expand our pipelines, and Austin P is committed to rolling out another pipeline next year, which will be elementary-middle teacher residencies. And so um, Dr. Chandler and Dr. Barron, Dr. Brewster and myself presented on November fourth, we presented many times, one over the waiver, one over the support, and then we're following that up on December sixteenth for interested educator preparation providers and districts to see if they can replicate this work.
Okay. You have any questions for us, comments?
I will say um, I'm a little biased, I am product of the CMCSS, uh, and I will say that I went to the best high school, you can interpret that how you will, whichever one you think that is, but um, in the video, I actually saw students, my brother just graduated, and I saw students in his graduating class that were on the board, and I think it's amazing that you guys are doing this. I think I had an amazing high school experience, and to see you striving to improve that, it's, it's just, it blows my mind, and I really appreciate that you guys are investing in my generation and the generations that are coming after me.
Well, I'll just add this, that um, thank you both and for your team for being here and um, and doing such a great collaborative and innovative, uh, doing such good work um, that puts Austin P further on the map and is, but more importantly, is helping our community, the, the broader community. And as you said, it sounds like a great model for the state and potentially the nation, and so kudos to all of you for the great work that you're doing. Kudos too to Dr. White, because I, I think I speak for the board, I'll take that leap in that these campus spotlights that we have at, at each meeting are um, are really revealing. You know, every time we have a meeting and we have a campus spotlight, I'm kind of blown away by what's going on here and, and that we don't know what's going on here. And then here's, you know, this presentation, and it's like, well, does, what else is out there that's, I can't wait for the next meeting, so thank you all for what you do, it's terrific.
Thank you.
We'll take a ten-minute break, so a little before half past. Thanks, everyone, if we get started again. Just a, a side note, a side note, I think uh Catherine asked a great question of the comp troller earlier, and uh, when I saw the ladies on either side of me kind of stiffen up based on his answer, um, we'll get some, we'll get some clarity for the board um on, is that in fact the policy and, and the, the uh, in terms of the sunshine law, or is it somewhat in the middle? So we'll, we'll try and, try and get that to everybody, so we're not going to be all-out meeting, you know, immediately. And with that, I'll recognize Trustee Mueller, Chair of the Academic Affairs Committee, to give us a report on her committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Academic Affairs Committee meeting. The committee did not review any action items. The committee reviewed the following information items. One, a letter of notification to THEC to establish a Master of Science in Criminal Justice Program, a letter of notification to THEC to establish a Bachelor of Science in National Security Studies Program, and a report out on the fall census enrollment. Subject to any questions, this concludes my report, and I move that the board approve the minutes of the November twenty-first Academic Affairs Committee as written.
It's been moved and seconded then that we adopt the minutes of the Academic Affairs Committee, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes of the Academic Affairs Committee, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved, thank you, General Mueller. Uh, now recognize Trustee Jenkins, Chair of the Student Affairs Committee, to give us a report on his committee meeting yesterday.
Thanks, Mike, for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Student Affairs Committee meeting. The committee did not review any action items. The committee did review two information items related to Adult, Non-Traditional, and Transfer Student Center Student Success Initiatives, and the G1 Gov's First Generation Student Success Initiative. That concludes my report. I move that the board approve the minutes of the November twenty-first Student Affairs Committee as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Student Affairs Committee, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Student Affairs Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Uh, I now recognize Trustee Kanata, Chair of the Audit Committee, to give us a report of the committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Chairman O'Malley. Yesterday, in the Audit Committee meeting, we listened to presentations regarding the following three items. The first was the internal audit reports released between August twenty-seventh, two-thousand nineteen, and October twenty-ninth, two-thousand nineteen, along with the list of outstanding audit recommendations. Second, we listened to a presentation on the internal audit client satisfaction survey results for the fall of two-thousand nineteen. And lastly, we listened to an information technology risks summary by Judy Monar, Associate Vice President and Chief Information Officer. That concludes my report. I move that we accept the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting held on November twenty-first, two-thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Catherine, it's been moved and seconded that the, we, we adopt the minutes of the Audit Committee, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, the minutes are approved. Now recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, the committee reviewed and approved the following action items. Consideration of the October revised budget for fiscal year two-thousand nineteen and two-thousand twenty. B, consideration of campus projects. And C, consideration of long-term lease agreement between the university and Montgomery County. These items will be presented for your review and action in a few minutes. The committee also reviewed the following information items. The two thousand twenty, twenty-one Tennessee Higher Education Convention State Appropriations Distribution Recommendation. And B, the twenty, 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 twenty-one uh Tennessee Higher Education Commission Capital Outlay and Capital Maintenance Projects Recommendations, and the two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-one Tennessee Higher Education Commission Tuition and Fee Recommendation. At the Fall Quarterly THEC Meeting, the recommendations are made for the state appropriations, capital projects, and student fees. These recommendations are then presented to the governor for consideration. The preliminary information from the Fall Quarterly THEC Meeting was shared with the committee. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and I move that the board approve the minutes of the November twenty-first Business and Finance Committee as written.
Thank you, Trustee Atkins, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee meeting, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the minutes are approved. Uh, Trustee Atkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you have before you a copy of the October revised budget for fiscal year two-thousand nineteen and two-thousand twenty. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the October revised budget for fiscal year of two-thousand nineteen and two-thousand twenty, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Uh, thank you, because it's a motion of the committee, we do not need a second, Catherine, but thank you anyway.
Okay.
That makes it even more official.
Yeah.
Uh, you've heard the motion to approve the October revised budget for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the October revised budget for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, twenty, uh, Secretary, please call the role.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
You've heard the motion to approve the campus projects, uh, is there any discussion? Or I guess, uh, Billy, I need, I need to ask you to make that motion.
The trustees also have before them a copy of the campus projects, and by direction of the committee, I move to approve the campus projects as written.
And thank you again, you've heard that motion to approve the campus projects, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of campus projects, uh, Secretary, please call the role.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
And Trustee Atkins, I believe you have an additional motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the trustees also have before them a copy of the long-term lease agreement between Austin P State University and Montgomery County. By direction of the committee, I move to approve the annual base rental fee for the lease agreement with Montgomery County, with the understanding that there may be some minor edits that may still be negotiated between Austin P and Montgomery County.
Thank you, Chairman Atkins, you've heard the motion to approve the annual base rental fee for the lease agreement with Montgomery County, with the understanding that minor edits may still be negotiated between Austin P and Montgomery County. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the annual base rental fee for the lease agreement with Montgomery County, with the understanding that minor edits may still be negotiated between Austin P and the county, Secretary, please call the role.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Chairman Atkins. You have before you a copy of the Use of University Property Rule, Classifying Students In-State and Out-of-State Rule, and Student Conduct and Disciplinary Sanctions Rule. I recognize Ms. Donnell Whiteside, Secretary to the Board, to give us some details on those rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you've all seen these rules before. Um, we've had some issues with getting them before the Government Operations Committee because they required us to have a rulemaking hearing, um, and open that up to members of the public, and then bring it back before them. Um, so we had that hearing, no surprise, no one came. Um, so I think that means that the public is okay with these rules, and so now I have to bring them back before you and then take them back through the process again. Um, hopefully, we got it this time. So that's why you're seeing them for probably the third time at this point, so.
They must be good rules, then. Is there a motion then to approve the Use of University Property Rule, Classifying Students In-State and Out-of-State Rule, and Student Conduct and Disciplinary Sanctions Rules? Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the Use of University Property Rule, Classifying Students In-State and Out-of-State Rule, and Student Conduct and Disciplinary Action, or Disciplinary Sanctions Rule, Secretary, please call the role.
Trustee Atkins? Trustee Kanata?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Wadia?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Thank you. I'd now like to invite Dr. Eric Norman, Vice President for Student Affairs, to provide an update on the Division of Student Affairs.
There we are. When I first got here in January, I assumed that we may need to increase the amount of programming we had on campus. I have to say, after being here now for nine months, I was wrong. I've really tried to put an emphasis on grants, cosponsorships, collaboration and partnerships, building up our learning outcomes, and establishing traditions, or making sure people were aware of our different traditions, all while focusing on success and retention. Really trying to make sure our experiences move beyond the transactional into the transformational and making sure we're building up established relationships with our students, not only on the surface, but at a deep level, so they will continue to come back. This is actually a picture of our service immersion that we did with incoming students. We took about three hundred students to seven sites around Clarksville and Montgomery County, and we continue to have a relationship with them, so they continue to work at those sites, uh, so they understand that the deeper connection and that service is not just a one-time thing. so they understand the deeper connection and that service is not just a one-time thing. We started off the semester understanding that mental health is an issue on a college campus, this is part of our Suicide Prevention Week that's being demonstrated here by Isaiah. Our counseling sessions are packed, so what we do is we have programs called Let's Talk, which are a drop-in service in a shorter period of time to triage students and make sure they understand the other resources that may be available on campus. We also have a partnership between the ARD and the Health and Human Performance Department through a grant that was provided to provide a drug and alcohol issues town hall, as well as provide a measure assessment through the National College Health Assessment. In the middle of September, we had Constitution Day, we had over 250 students willing to give up their rights. This was provided by an opportunity with two grants, one from the College Media Association and then the other establishment was called One for All. They provided the material, t-shirts, food. We had the students give up their ability to have free speech, free press, and free assembly when they volunteered to join the People's Republic of Clarksville. It was interesting to see their reaction, and we had a number of different volunteers from agencies in and around the town and the university to basically get harassed a little bit because they've given up their rights. Make sure we also sponsor with other organizations. This was a program with our Vets Reconnect Conference led by General Brower, funded by a grant from THEC. We did serve as a cosponsor, and the picture features Jasmine Leneris and General Bernie Atkins. The GIS Center, in conjunction with CoSTEM and the Disability Office, created a 3D tactile map of campus for those with visual impairments, and the story garnished national attention with over 1,4934 hits in September alone. The Disability Offices also hosted a silent dinner where individuals that participated were only able to sign or write, so you had an otherness experience. We will continue to repeat that in future semesters. Hispanic Heritage Month ran from September 15th through October 15th. We offer programs such as salsa dancing, but we also had a number of other events that help people understand the Latinx community, and we'll continue to build that up, in particular with our movement to the new center downstairs in the Union. Mental Health Awareness Day tends to be timed right when students start to become a little more stressed, you go six weeks in, we have a lot of services and programs that are front-loaded. Well, six weeks in now, they're getting into heavy assignments, their money may be running out, they may be not able to go home as frequently, their friendship may be stretched a little bit. So we ran a number of programs throughout this week, not just on Mental Health Awareness Day on October 8th. SGA held a public forum, as well as our offices holding multiple career fairs to help students understand their pipeline into the future. Mud Bowl may be an event you have heard of here before, and this year was exceptional, just like every other participation. Mud Bowl was also held in conjunction with Family Weekend and AP Day. We had a beautiful day, it was sunny, it was 75, we had bands out in the quad, so hopefully we're going to have a kick-up in our enrollment. SGA also hosted a Clarksville Speaks in conjunction with the College of Business. We also held Ghost, which is a very well-known program, I think we had 2,000, over 2,000 people participate in that event. Homecoming is also well-known, you may not know all the different activities that are encompassed within it. We did have a career fair, a bonfire, a pep rally, lip sync, a SEP show, a tug, a parade, and we also phased into Veterans Week, with the Military Alumni Dinner, and we also hosted Robert Shindell, who is the leading expert on internships in the United States. He's the founder of Intern Bridge, and we also had the Veterans Art Exhibit, and if you hadn't had a chance to go see it, you really missed out, we have some amazingly talented students. Mentioned yesterday our first-generation programming, again, we will continue to build that in the future. And with this picture, I have to say that we have an Action Pack Spring, and I can't wait to tell you what's going to be served up in 2020, and I want to part with a tradition we're really trying to make sure people understand. A lot of southern schools have hand signs, we have monocle up. Utilize it frequently. Monocle up, left hand. Any questions? The governor has the monocle on the left-hand side, monocle up. As my son's constantly going like this in front of me.
Thank you, Dr. Norman, I guess I shouldn't be, but it seems like there's great attendance at all or many of these events.
And they stay around, which is nice, they don't just depart when the food is out or the giveaway is out, or the event continues, the formal event stops, they hang around and they talk, which is really nice.
Thanks for all you do to make a difference on the campus, and well done. I'd now like to invite Ms. Judy Mullner, Associate Vice President and Chief Information Officer, to provide an update on the university's cybersecurity.
Thank you Chairman O'Malley. Yesterday, I presented at the Audit Committee an overview of the information technology security posture, just a general overview, but I was asked to talk a little bit more about cybersecurity, what's happening in the United States, in our climate, types of threats, and then what Austin P I.T. is doing to help mitigate those threats. So Inside Higher Ed is an online publication about many college and university topics that, they sent an email, and you can look at research online, and so I get a daily email from Inside Higher Ed, and it's academics, it's everything. And the last week of August, so the first week of our semester, this was one of the articles on the email. And the article identified two universities, and you know, when there are breaches, you really don't hear about all of them, but I think these were big enough that they hit their local and national news. And so two universities were identified, one was the Stevens Institute of Technology, they're in New Jersey, they're a private university, 7,000 students, they're an R2 research school. And so when you think about that, were these hackers looking at some of the research intellectual property that they might have? The article said that email was shut down, phones were shut down, they were shut down for a few days, it didn't say exactly what was happening, but that had occurred on August 10th, so right before the semester. They identified the second university as Regis University. It's a private school, 10,000 students, a doctoral granting similar to us, a large online presence, and they're in Colorado. And that was August 20th, they were still down when I read this on August 27th. They were getting ready for the start of school, they had to postpone classes. And so it was a bad thing. So President's Cabinet last month, I asked to speak about cybersecurity, just to make sure that our senior leadership and academic and administrative leadership were aware of some of these things occurring. So to prepare for President's Cabinet, and this is October 10th, about six to seven weeks later, I went to the university websites to make sure that I knew how many students were there, so I could kind of give them a glimpse. And I went to Regis University, and there's this big banner on their website, "Update Cyber Recovery." Some university phones and emails are temporarily unavailable. Visit regisupdates.com, notice it's not .edu, where apsu.edu, universities and colleges have that .edu, because their website had gone down when they were attacked on August 20th. So I went to that regisupdates.com, and I could see that their lab computers, some of them were still down, okay, October 10th, this is almost two months after they had been hit. Phones were still being brought back, their document imaging system, and we use a document imaging system for transcripts for incoming students and student records, they were rebuilding that from scratch. So I want you to notice the word recovery though, cyber recovery, I'm going to come to that in a few slides, I talked about it at the Audit Committee yesterday. So then, mid-September, I'm on a listserv for college and university CIOs here in the state of Tennessee, and an email came through from the Nashville State Community College CIO asking for help on rebuilding some servers. And as we talked to each other, nothing was said about any kind of attack or anything. And so went to their website, and it said they were infected with a virus, and quite a few of their servers were down, and they've taken a while to really recover from that. You know, you hear about the target, that was target data breach of 41 million customers 2013, the Equifax thing was in 2017, and now we hear about higher ed. And a lot of it is ransomware, we don't know the particulars about what happened, but that's where folks hold you hostage to get back to your data if you pay them, usually in Bitcoin. I attended a conference, the National Association of College Business Officers in July, and I sat in on a university from California and joint presentation with the FBI, and they're saying that some of these larger research schools are actually opening accounts with Bitcoin, just in case they get hit with this ransomware, so they're prepared. So I wanted to talk about types of threats, you know, of course phishing, we're all getting this in our personal email, you just have to be so careful, because just that one hook, if you don't download something malicious, this ransomware, what happens is usually you click on something malicious, maybe you didn't even know it got downloaded on your computer. And they're getting crafty, it doesn't happen right away. If you're not protected, your information system in your organization or the university kind of sits there, might just sit on your computer, and if you have a certain elevated access, an administrator access to download your own software, which we've removed from most computers, that we have a request process that people can ask, you know, our faculty that are doing research and things like that, that might need that special access, but they're aware of the vulnerability. But anyway, so it sits there, and then it says, well, where else can I go? Can I go to some lab computers because of the connectivity of the network? Can I go to some servers? Can I start doing that? But it sits there, so you don't even know, it might be sitting there for two weeks, six weeks. So that's some of the things that we're aware of and we're working on to prevent that from happening to us. I talked yesterday at the Audit Committee about these emails that are just asking for iTunes gift cards, where you scrape off and please take a picture and send it to me, and they'll pretend that there's somebody like Provost Gandy, but when you look, it's really rexgandy@gmail.com, it's not at apsu.edu, but we're so quick on our phones to just look and not see who it's coming from, and really double-checking that it's valid. Those kinds of things are occurring. My counterpart at MTSU, I had a meeting last month with my fellow CIOs, and he spoke that one of the deans got spoofed at MTSU, but a text message. Now they're using text to pretend, they spoofed the phone number of the dean's phone and for this gift card type thing. So we just all have to be on alert. So I had mentioned this yesterday, the state of Tennessee and the Comptroller Office, they mentioned about their audit, information systems audit, this is the framework that they use when they audit the state agencies from information systems. And NIST is the National Institute of Science and Technology, it's part of the U.S. Department of Commerce, it's something that Austin P we adopt as well when we look at things, and so when I mentioned to think about Regis, how they had that recover, cybersecurity recovery, that's the green one. That's one thing, I'd say a few years ago, we weren't really prepared. I'm not sure Austin P is totally prepared, that's where you talk about business continuity when we mentioned at Audit Committee yesterday, disaster recovery. Disaster recovery used to be about tornadoes, the one that hit Clarksville, but it's cybersecurity now, cyber threats and being able to recover, recover from that. You know, Austin P I.T., we look at all those areas and try to strengthen every day and become knowledge on that. Earlier this year, our IT Security Director, Stephanie Taylor, put together a three-year security plan, what did we need to address and think about over the next three years? And these are our five major focus areas. Year one, we had some specific things around those focus areas, and I'm happy to report that we're on track to complete probably 95% of those things that we hope to accomplish. And right now, we're looking at the things for year two and how we want to maybe adjust depending on what things are happening out there. I wanted to leave you with this slide. Educause is a national organization, nonprofit, for higher education IT professionals. They do annual conferences, they do regional conferences, they produce benchmarking reports, research, and the last four years, the number one top 10 IT issue has been information security strategy. So it's out there, it's our world, and I just want you to know that here in IT, we're doing our best to protect the university.
Questions? Comments? Thank you Judy for your update, it's a little scary, but thank you, it's good to know that you're there, and you and your team are vigilant every day to help prevent that kind of nonsense from infecting Austin P, so thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize President White to give her remarks and a report on any interim items.
I have been reflecting recently about the things for which I'm thankful, it's that time of year, Thanksgiving's a little bit late this year, but it is my favorite holiday. And I think a lot, Elliot and I make a point, to think about who we're thankful for and the blessings that we have, and I just wanted to thank you because you're part of that list, thank you for your commitment to Austin P, thank you for your investment in Austin P, thank you for the time that you put into Austin P. And I'm also very incredibly thankful for our faculty and staff, administration and students who make the university what it is. And you've seen a lot this board meeting about the contributions that people make, and there are many, many things going on in a positive way that are collaborations among people who have students' interests at heart. And I'm thankful for that, because it's not always the case in every place. And so one of the things I'm thankful for also is that even when things are tough nationally, Austin P is doing well. And so we have not made an official announcement, we won't make that until December 4, but I wanted to let you know that we will be announcing not only our record enrollment this fall, but also a milestone that we achieved again this fall, and that goes to the incredible work that our campus community has done to continue to recruit in a tough recruiting time. So December 4th, 11 o'clock, in the Morgan University Center Plaza, we will have a celebration. And this is going to be an important one, because we won't have another one again until we hit another big milestone, and so this is going to be a really nice celebration, and I'd like to invite you to that. I also want to take an opportunity to let you know that Provost Gandy has announced that he'll retire at the end of the summer or the end of next year, when I say next year, I mean 2020, but he'll step away from the provost's role at the end of May, so that a new provost can get a good start before the beginning of the fall semester. It's tough to do that kind of in the middle of, or the very beginning of a new semester. So we're in the process of hiring a search firm and appointing a search committee to help with the screening and recruiting for candidates, and I'm confident that we can attract a good candidate pool. The reason I'm confident we can attract a good candidate pool is because of the incredibly difficult work that Provost Gandy has done here, because a lot of the successes that we've achieved over the last few years have been because of his work, and I want to say thank you for that, Provost Gandy. And when you think about it, the Enrollment Management Team with Dr. Gandy and the faculty and staff have achieved the highest percentage of enrollment increase in the state over the last four years. And then we are now a doctoral institution, which we weren't before, and we've got faculty doing incredibly, it's innovative work, but it's difficult work, maintaining an understanding of where the jobs are going to be, not just looking at where the economic challenges are going to be in the next two to three or five years, but where are we going in the next 15 years? How can we develop curricula now that will prepare students for the future? And so there's a lot of data analysis. And so there's a lot of data analysis and a lot of forecasting that takes place. At the same time, it's really important to us to develop students who can have a good understanding of the world and have a knowledge of civics education and be prepared to have a good life, as well as to make a living. And so I'm proud of the work that our faculty and staff do. And Dr. Chandler mentioned it this morning, the deans work with their faculty, and he said a lot of the work is done elsewhere. And that's true. But we also have some really good deans who are doing great work with their colleagues and with their faculty to forecast and prepare and research where those curriculas should go. And so I'm very, very pleased about that. Another recent change that may affect your work is that Dr. McCartney Johnson, and she's been working with us all day, she'll be assisting Vice President Whiteside with the duties and responsibilities of preparing for the board meetings. And as such, in addition to being administrative specialist, we've added the title Assistant Secretary to the Board, to her. And so when Donella is away, then McCartney will be your point of contact. And I want to make sure you knew that, so if you got emails or direction from Dr. Johnson, you would know that she hasn't gone rogue, but Vice President Whiteside is...
I have another...
Yeah. Oh, is that an announcement?
No.
Yeah, I was, oh, I heard that. So I appreciate the work that Vice President Whiteside does as Secretary to the Board, and then also Dr. Johnson to assist. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Joanne Shepherd, who's there in the corner. She not only handles a lot of things here for us, she runs my life, which means I really could not be effective without Joanne's support, and I appreciate it so much. We also had a number of staff members who were taking minutes, and they take minutes while you're talking, then they go write them, and then I get them right after the board dinner, and then I send them back to Donella, make sure that we are on the same page. And then I got an email from Donella at 11:00 last night saying they're uploading. These folks are working behind the scenes all the time. So I just wanted to say thank you. So those are a lot of things that I am very thankful for. So I wanted to take just a minute or two to talk to you about the legislative session that's coming up in January. We spend a lot of time thinking about how we can tell the Austin P. story, so that we can get support in the legislature. And I wanted to share with you the things that we're asking the legislature to support. And the reason I'm doing this is so that you're aware. But also, some of you have interaction at the state, and I don't want to be promoting things in Nashville, and then you're asked a question, and you don't have the background by it, behind it. And then I also know that you can help advocate for us, and so I would appreciate that as well. Later in the year, at the June meeting, Dr. Clark, Carol Clark, is our Assistant Vice President for Community and Government Relations, she will let you know what was passed. So I'm going to give you a forecast today, and then Dr. Clark will come back at the end of the session and tell you what we were able to do. So as you heard yesterday, the NCAA Board of Governors voted last month to begin a process to permit student athletes the opportunity to benefit from the use of their name likeness and image. The NCAA Board has said that each division should look at how to effect these changes, but they also wanted these changes to be made within the frame of the core principles and guidelines, such as maintaining the priorities of education, which means we want these students to graduate, get degrees, and then also to enhance the collegiate experience that we want our, you know, the A.D. mentioned quite a bit yesterday, the phrase, the student athlete experience. I'm interested in wins. I love wins. I'm not great with losses. But it's so much bigger than that. It is, you referenced this yesterday, trustee Knottit. You gained a great education as a tennis player at the University of Tennessee. And a lot of that has to do with a relationship with the coaches, also working in the academic model where they have to do well, where they can't fall through the cracks, or otherwise they become ineligible. But we want them to be healthy and learn about a lot of things outside and off of the court or the field. And so the NCAA wants to make sure that we protect the student experience and the student athlete experience. As of right now, the current bylaw has not changed, and so it's still impermissible for any student athlete participating in an NCAA-sponsored sport to benefit from the use of the name, image, likeness. And even though that we are, even though this is not an initiative that Austin P. is pushing or advocating for, particularly one way or the other, there will be some movement in the Tennessee Legislature this session, because at least there will be bills filed. We've already seen some of them. So I'll give you an idea, or have Dr. Clark do that at the end of the year, how this might impact Austin P., depending on whether or not a bill has passed in the state of Tennessee. This year, we're asking the General Assembly to support the development and implementation of an Institute for National Security and Military Studies. So you have at your table a flyer that gives you an overview of that project, and I want to thank Dean Tucker Brown and his faculty, and General Scott Brower, our military advisor in residence, for working with faculty to, when I say working with faculty, they are working to build a framework, but it's our faculty who will be teaching the classes. And we can use a lot of the classes that we already have, and so they're already teaching those classes. So we'll package this a certain way. And then we're asking for support to add new classes and new faculty with significant expertise. We think this will be a project and initiative that can not only have significant implications for Austin P. and for our military affiliated students and those who want to serve them, but also at the national level. And frankly, if it's, if we're talking about national security at an international level. And so this really is a big deal. Also, General Bailey has assisted us with this effort. General Bailey, General Brower, Dr. Clark and I have spent quite a bit of time in Nashville lately, talking to a number of legislators who are expressing support, because they understand what this can do for national security, but also to put together a workforce that certainly would benefit from coming at Fort Campbell. If you're looking at some of the most strategic fronts and wins that the nation has had in the last 15 or 20 years, many of those were waged by the 101st, or the 160th, or the Fifth Group Special Forces. And so it makes sense to utilize the relationship with Fort Campbell and then to serve those veterans in active duty in getting prepared for this kind of career. And I also found out that General Bailey has a master's degree in national security studies, and that General Brower's master's degree is in defense studies. And so we're using their experience, which I think is going to be really helpful. We'll also continue to advocate for the capital projects you heard about yesterday. The next steps in the process for that Health Professions Building will begin in February, when Governor Lee will release his budget. So this project needs to be supported by Governor Lee, and I feel confident at this point, but I never, unlike Coach Huddspeth, I never anticipate anything until it's in my hand. But at that point, if it's in that budget, it'll go from Governor Lee to the legislature. And then the legislature will make a recommendation, and if the General Assembly approves the funding, the project will be submitted to the State Building Commission. We have also asked Secretary of State Trey Hargit to come later in the year, because he is the chairman of the State Building Commission. So what we're trying to do, and what we tried to do with Comptroller Wilson, and then last year, Treasurer Lillard, is to give you an understanding of the processes by which we operate when we're doing major projects, because there is a state role to play. And so this project will go to the State Building Commission, and after that, we would submit a request for a designer, and then another request for a construction manager. And so then, after we get all the design done, it has to be approved by the state fire marshal. And after that, we can bid the project and start the construction. And so I just mentioned that to say that most of you are in private business, and it is a whole lot easier to build when you're doing so privately, and frankly, it's cheaper to build privately. A lot of the regulation that protects the state adds cost, significant cost to a project. So it's not that we're dragging our feet, it's that we are going through that maze of approval process. So like the capital outlay and the maintenance request, Governor Lee's budget will contain a funding for state appropriations, and that will be what we would typically get in the formula funding. And so we will know more about potential for new state funding in the spring. The final item that we are advocating for in the legislature is a dual enrollment grant residency requirement. So when we talked about enrollment yesterday, you know that we're growing in dual enrollment students. And there are so many good things that happen from that particular initiative, because you allow students in high school to start getting some traction with their collegiate education and earning college credit. The things that I've always been interested in, and I've always paid attention to from my time as a dean, when I had oversight over the core curriculum, and then also as Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, is the quality. I want to make sure that the coursework that students do, that's supposed to be university level, truly is university level. And we find that pretty easily, because we know how they can move up to the next class, that second class. Are they doing well? Are they outfitted with the experience, the skills and the knowledge that they need to be successful? We also understand that dual enrollment classes allow students to see themselves as college going. So the state has done some work in the last year or two, actually the last couple of years, to look at increasing dual enrollment opportunities for students, particularly in rural areas, because they have less access to college anyway. And so we want these students to be successful and then to see themselves as college going. One of the challenges, though, that the state of Tennessee has is that while there's a scholarship given to students to take a certain number of classes in high school, these students have to be Tennessee residents for 12 months before they're eligible. So we have a number of students who come our way, who live in our area, who are dependents of military. And so they move here as rising juniors when they could take classes, or rising seniors, and they're shut out, because they are not considered residents. And so we have advocated in the past, and will be advocating again, for an exception for military dependents, because we believe that it's our duty to treat those students as Tennessee residents when they've moved here, because their parents are serving our country in the military. So that's another thing that we are really passionate about. On Monday, our senior leadership team will be meeting with our legislative delegation about all these items that I've shared with you, and we'll discuss how they impact Austin P. I just want you to know, too, how much support we have from our legislative delegation. They come to campus, they interact with us, they ask how we can help, they call and let us know if something is happening down the pike that needs to be addressed. They also allow us to have free access to them when we need their help. And so that is really unusual. We have an unusual level of access to our legislators, and I'm very, very thankful for it, because it makes a difference. So finally, I wanted to make you aware, also have a change for the next board meeting. So in March, we'll be having those Thursday committee meetings out at the APSU farm. That's about 10 minutes from campus, so it's not very far from here.
Under that tree?
Well, there you go. Oh, no. I can say no, not under that tree. But it's a 440 acre farm, and you'll have a teaching demonstration, you'll be able to visit our championship herds of Angus, belted galloway, and Seminole cattle, and we look forward to hosting you there. And I'll be happy to take any questions or hear your concerns, and then also remind you to look at the interim items that are uploaded in your portal. And that's all I had for my report.
One comment from your, damn, close enough. From your handout, I just added this up, 61,300 veterans and 26,800 soldiers. And then if you multiply that by how big the family is, we could be talking an influence of 250,000 people on this community and in our sights for possible attendance at Austin P. So we got a pretty good, as, you know, I'm sure Scott and guys know this already, but a pretty nice target. And this will only help it and secure a better opportunity for us in that regard.
I think it will. And I also noticed Dean Brooks, I didn't see him originally, but Dr. Brooks is our dean for the Graduate School. One of the things that he does with the other deans, the other deans have a separate college with, each has a college with a variety of programs that rest in that college. One of the things that Dr. Brooks does is work with them to create graduate programs to serve whatever interest it is. And there are a number of other programs, like that master's degree in criminal justice with the Homeland Security option that we talked about yesterday. And so we are continually scanning the horizon for ways to serve those 250,000 people that you referenced. This is just one.
Any other comments or thoughts from the board? Just a couple from, another hour or so? I have a few remarks I'd like to make.
Not today, because we don't have any more information, but if with the chairman's permission, we can certainly bring that back to the board at the next meeting.
You know, I'm with Catherine, that college athletics has got to be a part of the whole scenario. Either that, or we just all ought to come to college online. That's the other end of it. So where I am as a board member is to say, let's press forward towards athletics the way we're doing right now, and do it in an exemplary way with the way we're doing it right now. Big kudos, big kudos to you guys.
Amen. Just in light of Dr. White's theme of giving thanks, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I'm looking at the slide, and it says, you know, the tagline at the bottom is "Leading Through Excellence," which is what happens here at Austin P. So I did want to offer thanks to, one, the folks that provided the food last night, this morning, all the camera folks, audiovisual people, and everybody involved in setting up the room. These meetings don't go off without a lot of effort, and I want to recognize that. It's always, things happen without a hitch, so kudos to the team. And also thanks to the leaders, not only in this room, but on campus, from the deans, the faculty, the administration, the staff. We do, in fact, have a first-class institution here, led by the best president in the Tennessee Board of Regents group of universities, if not a much bigger group. So thank you for your leadership. And with that, to answer your question, general luck, let me remind everybody that our next meeting is May, March 19th and 20th, 2020. And with that, I move that we adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? It has moved and seconded that the meeting adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.